This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South 5th Avenue on January 3rd, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone. John, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Bremmeltler.
Here.
Councilwoman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Right now, it is my great pleasure to ceremonially install Matthew Hale as our newest council member. So Matt, would you join me up front? And who will -- yeah, of course. Who's taking pictures? Anybody have a camera?
John is helping.
Repeat after me. I, Matthew Hale.
I, Matthew Hale.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of councilperson.
Perform all the duties of the office of councilperson.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Many of you may not be aware, but the Borough has a special service it provides to all our residents, and that is social services. Tonight, I'm delighted to have Nicole Huff, who is our social worker for all of our residents, come and talk a little bit about what she does. By the way, she is available to anyone in town and is located in the senior rec building. So Nicole, would you come up to the microphone?
Hello.
It is. You just have to speak close to it.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay, so my main job as a social worker here for the Borough is mainly to do outreach services. I help with applying for state benefits such as NJ Family Care and food stamps and housing. I also help senior residents apply for Medicare Part A, B, C, and D. I explain social security benefits and the differences between retirement and supplemental social security and social security disability. I also work with our local food pantry. I do all the intakes for the clients coming in seeking assistance with food. And that gives me a chance at the same time to sit and speak with them about other services that they may need. I am available full-time Monday through Friday. I just ask that people make an appointment so that way I can give each and every person that comes to see me enough time for them, you know, for me to give them my full attention and so that I'm able to explain what benefits there is and try to understand exactly what services they may need. I am -- if I don't know, like if somebody comes to me seeking assistance in a certain area that I may not know right away whether that program exists or not, I will do all the research I can to find that service for the resident. So I just, you know, I'm here for all outreach services, state, county, federal, all arounds. I'm here. Just, you know, come seek me out and I will be happy to sit down and try to help you the best I can.
Thank you, Nicole.
Nicole, what's your phone number that you can be reached?
My phone number is 732-819-0052. Like the mayor said, my office is located at the Senior Youth Center at 220 South 6th Avenue. But you do not need to be a member of the senior center to come see me. You only need to be a resident here in Highland Park.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And Nicole has already helped so many of our residents. She's wonderful and has just the perfect demeanor and personality to work with all of you. Thank you, Nicole. All right, council reports. I'm going to start on my right this time with Councilman Hale.
Hi, thank you very much, Mayor. Couple notes that I have from the Highland Park Food Pantry. Just a reminder that September is Hunger Action Month. The Food Pantry has been partnering with the Middlesex County Food Bank about raising issues of hunger awareness. A couple that I didn't know, one in seven Americans and almost 80,000 people in Middlesex County are food insecure. So it's an important issue. The Food Pantry has a calendar of events for September Hunger Awareness Month and also are promoting the hashtag #HungerActionMonth. So I thought that was important. The second thing that I have is the Mayor's Wellness Campaign is in need of volunteers. It's -- we have a number of different slots for that campaign that are open for volunteers. So if anyone is interested in that, please put your volunteer paperwork in. The Board of Health has a couple alternative slots available as well. So those are the ones that I have for today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
I have a few things, please. Although August is a slow month for our committees, Main Street has a lot going on. Our Friday Farmer's Market active throughout the fall. Please stop by. Our outdoor movie theater, we've rescheduled Castle in the Sky to Friday, September 14th at 8:00 p.m. at the municipal parking lot. Thanks again to Brian Onkin for organizing and presenting our outdoor movie program. This is the last chance to sign up to be a vendor or artist at Arts in the Park. Our Juried Arts Festival, which is scheduled for Sunday, September 16th, you can register at mainstreethighlandpark@gmail.com. Our Townwide Garage Sale is coming up on October 6th and 7th. You can register at hpgaragesale@gmail.com to get your house listed. There's a couple of things on the agenda tonight as well that we're passing. We've been very active with redevelopment this past year, and we've got another item on here, 31 River Road, which we've been just discussing on council. And the vote is to send this over to our planning board to have them take a close look and consider redesignating this property as an area in need of redevelopment. There's a developer who's interested in a project and we may want to see this through. And we're interested in what our planning board would have to say and what their recommendation is. And also, we are introducing an ordinance to require inspections and the issuance of certificates of continued occupancy for multi-dwelling and apartment buildings at the time of sale. What's going on right now is the state usually inspects these multi-dwelling units, and you know that we have many of these large garden apartments and such. And they're supposed to do it every five years, but they're falling way behind. The minimum is at least eight years. So we feel that if we inspect them at the time of, say, the sale of one of these large complexes, our code enforcement can go in and ensure that the properties are safe for the new residents and that we're helping them live in a safe environment. So those are the two things that we're going to be voting on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thanks, Mayor. I'm excited about this one, in particular that on September 12th at 3:00 p.m. that we're going to have the grand opening for the long-awaited Zone 6 Youth Center on South 6th Avenue. I can tell you, I have been watching the project as it comes into view, and it's awesome. The building is there. And last Friday night at about 10 o'clock, I was driving down the street and I saw, I was like, why are all the lights on in the seniors, in the youth center? And as I pulled over to go inquire, like, who's there? What are they doing? There were young people actually inside. They were painting. They were so excited that they're there at 10 o'clock at night and they're putting their murals in, and Ashton was there, and he's super excited. And a lot of the teens have been just, it hasn't opened yet, but they're flocking and they want to see what it is that they can do to improve the center. They have lots of ideas. There's lots of really good energy around the project, and they are anxiously awaiting the teen center to open because they have been there. They're, you know, looking at every aspect of the project as it comes to light. So they are going to be very much engaged, and I'm really excited about this project. So September 6th, I mean, September 12th will be our grand opening from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So please come out and see our brand-new youth center that they're so crazy about, and it's called the Zone 6 because it's on South 6th Avenue, Teen Center. With that said, more exciting news that our officer, Officer Sean Bibby, was honored by the New Brunswick Highland Park VFW for his years of service in the U.S. Navy. That was on August 31st at the HBL football game. So congratulations, Officer Bibby. The Highland Park Police Department is hiring, they're seeking new police, a new police officer. There's a position available. If you are interested, applicants have completed the basic course of police officer by the State of New Jersey, and they need to have the basic training in place, and they must be accredited by the New Jersey Police Academy. And if you are interested, please go to the Borough of Highland Park Police Department at 222 South 6th Avenue, or you can call to get more information from our police department. The last day that you are allowed to submit your resume is September, Sunday, September 16th. And if you're interested or know someone who's interested in becoming our local police officer, please go ahead and ask them to submit an application. And so this position is for a person who is already an officer, not a person that has to go through the academy. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking for someone who is ready to hit the ground running here in Highland Park. So please, if you know of anyone, pass that information along. Speaking of public safety, as the kids are going back to school this week, we must be extra careful when we're driving throughout the town to ensure that all public safety warnings are, we're paying attention, that we're looking out for the kids that are crossing the street, the seniors that are crossing the street. Please pay extra attention to make sure that everyone stays safe in town. Also, I can't say it enough that people need to utilize the sidewalk. As the hours is going to get darker and darker, people are wearing dark clothes, they're walking in the street, and we do not want to see anyone get hit by a car. So please utilize the sidewalk. Please walk on the sidewalk. We're going to be sending messages out. If you look at our Facebook page, we'll have information on Facebook, we'll have information on Nexo, and we'll be sending notices to the Houses of Worship to encourage everyone that we don't want to see any of our residents get hurt, so please do utilize a sidewalk. And another, as we move from there, one more, two more things that I have to say, that we are seeking volunteers for our warming center. As the weather, as we're looking towards the winter season, we don't know what it may bring, but we're hoping that if, in the result, that we have really horrific weather, that we need people to volunteer to serve in our warming center, and that will be at South 6th Avenue, the senior youth center, we will need people to volunteer to serve in our warming center. So if you're interested in volunteering in town, here's a great opportunity that you can sign up for. Just go to the website and fill out one of those volunteer forms and sign up to help us in case we need someone who needs, who wants to volunteer in our warming center. Last but not least, we have been receiving a number of emails, and I'm quite sure everyone in town has seen this problem with the deer population that has exploded everywhere. And with that said, that we're in the process, we've been talking to the Fish Game and Wildlife Person. She was on vacation. Terry happened to get ahold of her. So now we're looking at to schedule a townwide meeting with her. So please stay posted, look out for that information that we're going to send you, the date that when we're going to have a townwide forum to discuss how do we handle the booming deer population that is everywhere, and we have some legitimate concerns. Thank you, Mayor. That's my report.
Thank you. That's a full report. We're all very excited about that teen center. And by the way, as Councilwoman Foster Dublin said, it's called Zone 6. It was actually named by our teens. So they're really taking ownership of that building, and it's wonderful to see. Councilman Fine, do you have a report?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. So at the last council meeting, I mentioned that the Borough will be looking into the possibility of establishing a charitable fund for property taxes. As our residents are aware, the new federal tax law prevents taxpayers from deducting more than $10,000 of personal income sales and property taxes. In May, the New Jersey State Legislature attempted a workaround on this by passing legislation to allow taxpayers to contribute to certain state-sponsored charitable funds and in return get a credit against their state income taxes or local property tax. Specifically, the legislation passed in May authorized local taxing jurisdictions to create charitable funds and grant property tax credits equal to 90% of voluntary contributions to such funds. Unfortunately, in August, the IRS issued proposed regulations that won't permit the workaround. The IRS stated that it will consider payments of property taxes to local charitable funds to be of a quid pro quo nature, and that for a payment to be considered a charitable contribution, the taxpayer cannot receive any benefit in return. Accordingly, at this time, the council's Finance Standing Committee will not be pursuing a plan to set up a charitable fund for property taxes. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wolkowitz, you had one more thing?
Yes, thank you. Since Councilwoman Stephanie Kim is not here tonight, I just wanted to make mention that the Highland Park Window Art Walk is going to be held the night before, I'm sorry, Saturday, September 15th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., the night before Arts in the Park. The work is up now through September 30th. This is sponsored by the Highland Park Arts Commission. However, it does bring out a lot of foot traffic that supports our Main Street. And just one more thing, I'd like to wish everybody who celebrates a very happy Rosh Hashanah, a very happy and healthy Rosh Hashanah.
Okay. And Councilman Hale has one more.
I just wanted to add one thing to Councilman Fine's discussion of the charitable deduction. The IRS has said that it is, the IRS regulations and IRS ruling would prevent New Jersey from using the workaround. I just would like to also point out that there were likely to be multiple lawsuits that will challenge the IRS ruling about whether or not states and localities can do those workarounds. So it, just because the IRS says it's done, I would say it's not done yet.
Council President, do you have a report?
I do briefly. Again, as Councilwoman Wolkowitz mentioned, some of the committees were a little slow during August because of vacations and the schedule. But before discussing that briefly, with regard to the veterans, I would extend a remembrance for Senator McCain who passed away late last week. Regardless of whether you disagreed with his policies or his politics, he was one of the most active advocates for the veterans, having been shot down over Vietnam, imprisoned, tortured, refusing release to the last of the men under his command because he did take over his Hut Number 3 and eventually the base as commander of the prisoners. And veterans will miss him. I note that, and I'm going to be saying this every time until October and the Townwide Yard Sales, the garbage and recycling schedule is going to change for the week of October 9th because Monday is Columbus Day, and the Sunday and Saturday before that are the Townwide Yard Sale. In the past, we've had a really tough time doing the pickups. There've been some problems with properties where scavengers went through it, material was blowing into the streets. So since recyclables basically don't biodegrade like garbage does, we're going to suspend recycling for that week. We're going to continue trash pickup on the regular schedule, Tuesday, North Side, the Triangle, and the Business District because Monday is the holiday, and Friday on the South Side. But Wednesday and Thursday will be townwide pickup, and if we can add extra crews after garbage pickup, we'll be doing that. So we want everybody to know in advance that there's going to be a change that week. This week, the Environmental Commission is meeting tomorrow night at 8:00 at the Environmental Center. They have discussions on their 2019 agenda as well as some updates on some existing projects. Shade Tree Advisory Committee meets next Wednesday at 7:00. It's an early date, I believe. They want to move the agenda up because they're going to be presenting their plan for the Emerald Ash Bore problem so that we can get that to the county, get that moving. The Borough is going to be reviewing that as well, so they want to do a presentation now that the plan has been pulled together. Sustainable Highland Park is meeting on the 26th at 7:30 in the Environmental Center, working again on their Phase 2 of plastic, removal of plastic from the retail stream. STACK, which, or the, sorry, the Native Plant Preserve volunteers who work under STACK have applied for a grant which we have on the consent agenda for tonight. It's an interesting grant sponsored through the College of New Jersey and Sustainable New Jersey, and it grants you volunteers. As opposed to money, it puts boots on the ground, and three of the projects they're recommending are tailor-made for us, which is improvements to our Meadow Trail and Environmental Center area. Some other issues tonight, you're going to see a lot of bond issues. We talked about these last time. Some of these with regard to the water meters and valves and hydrants and so on are bonds that are related to our application for low or zero cost of long-term financing from the Infrastructure Bank. In order to move through Phase 2 of this, because we've always gone, we've already gone through Phase 1, we have to show that the Borough is otherwise able to finance these projects so that we are introducing the bonding to show them, yes, we can do this. So, but the upshot of this is, is that the Infrastructure Bank would make lower no-cost loans are actually under market for the bond market as well. Some of it may be forgivable, but in order to move through Phase 2 to get the infrastructure bank grants, we have to introduce these ordinances tonight. Thanks, Councilwoman Wolkowitz. I wanted to mention, because Stephanie's not here, the Art Walk. One group will be meeting at 4:00 down at Garden Party. The other group will be meeting up at Tiger, I believe it's Tiger Arts. And you'll actually walk the street, meet the artists, get the narrative. They've indicated they will be done on time this year. I spoke with Mr. Marin at length yesterday on this issue. And then it's very enjoyable. Last year, we had a great time with the walk, meeting the artists on the street, and I urge everyone to do it. And finally.
And it culminates at Pinos.
It culminates at Pinos, yes. And finally, I just want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Foster Dublin. The opening of Zone 6 is not confined to just the day we broke ground on that. I remember her advocating for this when I was prosecutor, and that goes back 18 years. She's stayed on it every day, on every moment, and I look forward to the opening on the 12th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
Just a couple items, since I'm still in vacation recovery, as they say. I just want to remind everybody that today was the first day we resumed our regular hours, right when you figure out summer hours, we resume. So Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday, 8:00 to 6:00, and Friday, 8:00 to 1:00. So remember, Fridays are half-day. So as you're doing your business, keep that in mind. And I thank Councilwoman Foster Dublin for reminding me, when you mentioned the police position we have open, we also have an Assistant-to-Me position open, which I'm very excited. It's a long time coming. And if you know a really ingenuative jack-of-all-trades, wants to learn everything about government type of person, I'd encourage you to submit their applicant, have them submit their application on our website. It's all available at hpborough.com. So those are my two.
And Borough Administrator, what is the drop date for submitting?
That, because I wasn't here when it was posted, but I would say certainly before the end of September.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay, just a couple of things from me. I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. The weather certainly cooperated better than they had thought. And I think it's important for us to remember that Labor Day was first established in the 1800s as in an effort to bring all of the unions together in a common cause and to ensure the safety of their workers. We've come a long way over the centuries, and I think that's a good thing. However, we must stay diligent and remember to take care of all of the workers that we have in our community and all over the country and ensure that they have safe working conditions. I also wanted to take a moment for all of us here to remember Senator McCain. I did not agree with everything that he proposed or voted for or didn't vote for, but I did respect the man. He was a person of honor. He would put our country before politics. I would like it very much if we could just take a moment to remember Senator McCain. Thank you, and I hope that we'll have more politicians like him in the future. And finally, I too would like to wish everyone who is going to be celebrating Rosh Hashanah and then following Yom Kippur, a peaceful and meaningful holiday over the next couple of weeks. All righty, public discussion. This is our first public discussion, and we have to limit each person to three minutes. Okay? So if you'd like to come up and say something, please step up to the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like everyone that's present tonight in this room and everyone that's watching television to please join me in a moment of silence for the late Senator John McCain. Thank you. Very recently, I attended a meeting. Very recently, I attended a meeting, and there were hundreds and hundreds of veterans, many I—I know and many I did not know, and I met for the first time. I met veterans all—from all over the country. Hundreds and hundreds of veterans came to listen to our late Senator John McCain. At this meeting, there were many United States Senators from both sides of the aisle, Democrat and Republican. And I did not know why—they why they were there, and all of a sudden, they were introduced, all these senators—and I have a lot of respect for both—for all these senators. A lot of these senators were United States veterans, and they came to listen to Senator McCain and what his platform was to be on Veterans Affairs. We have—we have lost one of our greatest men in the Senate, well-respected from both sides of the aisle. And Senator McCain, when he got done speaking, he left—he left the stage with three words, and I would like to repeat those three words that Senator McCain said. He said, "God bless America," and don't you ever forget that, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Any other public discussion? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, would you report on advertising and amending the bond—bond ordinance, amending 15-1881, 15-1894, 15-1897, and 17-1928 for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Amending bond ordinance number 15-1881, adopted by the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park on February 17th, 2015, appropriating $1,860,000 and authorizing the issuance of $1,767,000 in bonds or notes, as previously amended by bond ordinance number 15-1894, adopted on October 1st, 2015, as amended by bond ordinance number 15-1897, adopted on December 1st, 2015, and as amended and supplemented by bond ordinance number 17-1928, adopted on February 21st, 2017. To amend the description set forth to include the environmental remediation of various properties located in the borough has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
It's been a dream of mine for the past few years to have this PSCNG solar field project go through, and their whole program is to build a solar field on underutilized contaminated properties. But with this, we're actually going to do some of the remediation, which is just wonderful to have a cleaner site within our municipal boundaries. So absolutely, yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising bond ordinance providing for the purchase and installation of large diameter water meters for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
So moved.
No.
All right, go ahead.
Bond ordinance providing for the purchase and installation of large diameter water meters buying in the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $2,400,000, therefore, from Water Sewer Utility of the Borough and authorizing the issuance of $2,400,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of final—of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and supplemental debt filed in the clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction has been received by the Division of Local Government Services on August 14th, 2018.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved. After that exciting introduction, we just have to move that motion. I'll second.
Okay. Any public hearing? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I tried to save you the title. Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising the bond ordinance providing for the replacement of existing water main valves and hydrants and the implementation of an asset management plan for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the replacement of existing water main valves and hydrants and the implementation of an asset management plan buying in the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $920,000 thereof from Water and Sewer Utility of the Borough and authorizing the issuance of $920,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and supplemental debt filed in the clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction has been received by the Division of Local Government Services on August 14th, 2018.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
All right, Clerk, would you report on advertising bond ordinance for various 2018 roadway improvements for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for various roadway improvements buying in the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $2,287,000 thereof and authorizing the issuance of $1,619,040 in bonds and notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and supplemental debt filed in the clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction has been received by the Division of Local Government Services on August 14th, 2018.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing. May I have a resolute—may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I just asked if the deputy clerk is going to make it through the rest of these titles? Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Clearly, you see the summer may be summer for some people, but this council has been working. Clerk, would you report on advertising the bond ordinance for acquisition of police, fire, and public works equipment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of police, fire, and public works equipment buying in the Borough of Highland Park in the County of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriating $315,000 there—therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $299,990 in bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof, has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection as required by law, and supplemental debt statement filed in the clerk's office by the Finance Director prior to introduction has been received by the Division of Local Government Services on August 14th, 2018.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Public hearing? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Here, yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Okay, Clerk, would you report on introduction of an ordinance to require inspections and the issuance of certificates of continued occupancy for multi-dwelling and apartment buildings at the time of sale of—for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County requiring inspections and the issuance of certificates of continued occupancy for multi-dwelling and apartment buildings at the time of sale has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
May I have a motion to separate on the consent agenda number 18?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the following consent agenda items? Number 17, number 19 through—number 19, no, through 30. 30.
Mm-hmm.
Executive session is a separate motion.
Yeah.
It's 30.
See, 30.
It's 30.
31 is separate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so a motion to—
Motion to adopt.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
May I have a motion—I am about to appoint William Winfrey to the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Absolutely. We very much welcome Bill Winfrey to our committee.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject going to executive session?
No, number 18.
Number 18.
Number 18.
Here we have 18. The latest contract.
Yes, okay. Thank you all. May I have a motion to adopt number 18 on the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt going into executive session to discuss litigation on Buckwoods after this meeting?
Motion to adopt.
Roll—second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkovich?
Yes.
Okay, now we move to the final public discussion session. Does anyone—Mrs. Bickard, please come up.
Please, Bickard, you have seven magnolia. I have a couple questions.
Can somebody help her with the microphone so she can be heard?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The microphone, we can't hear you.
Go closer to the microphone.
Still closer?
That's good.
I think you need more power.
Yeah, so do I.
We did some work a while ago on traffic lights, but not on the main avenue, but rather on the corners and intersections like Third and at Fourth at Magnolia. For some reason, as I approach in the evening with my dog, the light suddenly goes out before that it was shining bright.
You mean streetlights?
Streetlights.
You have a magnetic feel around you. I'm just kidding.
Okay. She was saying it was your magnetism.
I was saying it's your magnetism, so the lights go out.
So Lieutenant Hammel, would you be able to have someone address that issue for Mrs. Bickard?
What was the intersection again?
Well, this happened at both at Third and Fourth and Magnolia, but it's happened at other intersections as well, as if they are timed to—for a certain amount of time while there is motion, and then the people have crossed or the car has driven by, and the light goes out, and it's—it takes a while until it comes up again, and I'm standing there waiting for the light. So I don't know whether it's meant to be that way, or—
I'll have to contact—I don't have a answer for you on that. I think that the streetlight should be updated.
And if we would be kind enough, Third and Magnolia desperately needs repaving. It is full of past potholes. It's been here for years, and now it's getting worse, and we're getting on winter and on ice and on snow, and we've had accidents, children, schoolchildren crossing and being hurt. Please. That's my message for you.
Oh.
Thank you, Ms. Bickard.
Well, thank you for coming. Any other public discussion? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to—to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everyone.